Well, I guess we got a preliminary step.
Yeah, so unfortunately Jason's not able to make the meeting this morning. So that means we have neither a chair nor a vice chair. And so we'll need to appoint a temporary chair, please. If anybody wants to make a motion.
Did everybody hear that online there? Commissioner.
I could hear you, but I didn't, I can't see who's there.
Yeah, I can hear y'all.
So we need to elect a chair for the meeting today because neither the chair nor the vice chair are present.
All right, bye.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Farrar as our interim chair for today's meeting.
I'll second that.
So I guess we take a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Aye.
And that would leave nobody opposed, so I will turn it over to you.
All right. So at box bit off on the wall, so at approximately ten oh two Tuesday, July ninth, two thousand twenty four, I call a meeting, the regular meeting of the Klatsepp County Planning Commission to order. Please join me in a flag. That plays allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Magyar?
Here.
Commissioner Satanovich?
Here.
Commissioner Linder? Commissioner Farrar?
Present. Um, next up is adopting the agenda. Does anybody, um, do you need to make any changes in the agenda? We were, we had a one revision, but it came a few days ago. So I'm presuming everybody has the one shown on the screen, which includes a presentation. Um, if there are no changes, then I'd be looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved, moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor, please signify with aye.
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 Opposed? Decision is unanimous, so we adopt the agenda as presented. And uh, next we move to uh, a time for business from the public. As we've been, um, this is an opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use planning issue or county concern that is not on the agenda today. Have we received any written or verbal? Okay. Uh, I don't see anybody in the audience either who wishes to make a, a comment. So we'll move on to a presentation as our first item. Um, this will be a presentation given by Meg Reed, a coastal policy specialist for the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And will provide information related to the goal exception process in relation to the U.S. Army Corps use of the flow lane to dispose of dredge materials in the Columbia River. So if we could, in that presentation, I welcome Meg Reed.
Good morning, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Let me get my presentation up. All right, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so good morning, uh, my name is Meg Reed. I'm the coastal policy specialist for the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. Thanks for inviting me today. I'm gonna give a brief presentation about um, kind of setting the stage a little bit first. Um, related to statewide planning goals sixteen and seventeen, some background for this discussion. Um, kind of talking about what uses are allowed and not allowed in the estuary and what action is now happening that requires a goal exception. Go through a little bit of what a goal exception is and, and how that process takes place. And finish with the action that will eventually come before you. Um, and uh, in addition to sort of the multi jurisdictional element of uh, estuary management. Um, and then end with any questions and discussion. So to start, just a little bit of background, I'm sure you're all very familiar with the statewide planning program that is administered by the Oregon Department of Land Conservation Development, but really implemented by all of our cities and counties throughout the state of Oregon, which is based on this foundational set of nineteen planning goals, which you can see on the screen here. They uh, cover a variety of topics to cover comprehensive planning. And the last four that are highlighted in blue are coastal specific and, and specific to coastal resources. So today I'm really gonna focus on goal sixteen, estuary resources, and a little bit on goal seventeen, coastal shorelands. Um, the other thing I wanted to highlight and mention, um, because it is a bit relevant in this particular discussion is that um, DLCD is also the administrative home of the Oregon Coastal Management Program. Um, that's a partnership between the federal government and all states and territories that have a coastline. And it is a partnership in which uh, states meet minimum requirements and in return get federal funding as well as federal consistency authority. Um, this is through the Coastal Zone Management Act of nineteen seventy two. The Oregon Coastal Management Program was first approved in nineteen seventy seven. And uh, while I could spend a lot of time talking about federal consistency authority, just briefly, it is the ability for the state to apply its policies to any federal action or permit that's occurring in the state's coastal zone. And in Oregon, it is roughly the crest of the coast range out to the edge of the territorial sea, which is three nautical miles from shore. And that's what's highlighted in that map there on the right, the light green and the dark blue. Um, so all the cities and counties that are in that coastal zone are also part of our Oregon Coastal Management Program. So that would include Klatsepp County. And uh, because of our statewide planning network that um, has like statewide policies set through the planning goals that are actually implemented through city and county comprehensive plans and zoning ordinances, we are able to apply not only state policies, but local level policies as well to those federal actions and permits. So in this particular case, that would mean the Army Corps of Engineers dredging of the federal navigation channel in the Columbia River estuary, they are subject to federal consistency review. So um, just to give some background on goal sixteen itself, um, that's the estuary resources planning goal. And it is essentially zoning in the water. It's a fairly unique system to Oregon, um, where every estuary in the state, uh, there are twenty-two major estuaries and seventeen minor estuaries are given an overall classification of either con- or natural conservation, shallow draft development or deep draft development. And so for the Columbia River estuary, it is a deep draft development estuary, which means it has jetties at the mouth as well as a federal navigation channel that's twenty-two feet or deeper. This um, channel is authorized to forty-three feet. And then within that, there are uh, discrete geographic zones that can be either natural conservation or development. And those are discrete zoning areas and uh, they're based on the resources that are present, such as tide marshes and eelgrass or development activities that have historically taken place, are presently taking place or may in the future take place. So federal navigation channel, for example, or marinas and boat ramps, things like that. And so the, the um, jurisdiction sets the overall um, the boundaries of those management units based on what's there. And the goal itself is pretty prescriptive about what kinds of uses and activities are allowed in each of those. Natural being the most protective of the natural resources present versus development being uh, the most protective of development opportunities and conservation being somewhere in between those two. Um. And those are part of a um, an estuary management plan. So there's a, an overall Columbia River estuary management plan uh, that's incorporated into the Klatsepp County Comprehensive Plan. And the county is the holder for all, all of the estuary management plans for uh, the whole county. So in, in Klatsepp County, there's the Columbia River as well as the Ecola Creek and then the Canacom estuaries. And then the cities adopt the sections of the plan that are relevant to their own jurisdiction, which is usually either done by adopting the plan through reference or um, just adopting the specific pieces of the plan that are applicable to the jurisdiction. So for the Columbia River, um, it is uh, the cities of Warrington and Astoria that are also included. Um, so you can see sort of the, the overarching boundaries of those, of those different zones in this screenshot. The um, the very dark blue is the navigation channel and other areas that are zoned to development. The medium blue is conservation areas and then the light blue is the natural management zones. And the estuary goes from the mouth of the river up to the western edge of Puget Island. Um, just a little bit about goal seventeen, which is coastal shorelands. It's a very um, integrated goal with goal sixteen and they have a strong relationship. So this is the lands that are immediately adjacent to the estuary as well as lands adjacent to coastal lakes and ocean shore. Um, and it, it's really what I think of as the working waterfront school. So it's seeking to conserve and protect coastal shorelands with while directing development to the places that are most appropriate and the lowest risk to human life or property. It has management requirements for the lands bordering estuaries, coastal lakes and the ocean. And they focus on uh, the protection of management, or sorry, the protection and management of resources that are unique to shoreline areas like Headlands, for example. Um, significant shoreline habitat, lands especially suited for water dependent use, public access to coastal waters and uh, potential restoration or mitigation sites as well as dredge material disposal sites. Um, that's typically implemented through zoning or overlays. Um, and, and that's implemented in, in particular for Klatsepp County through articles four, five and six in the law duck. Um, and it's not necessarily going to be in play for this particular goal exception application that I'll talk about, but just wanted to highlight the um, close coordination of these two elements. And then, and for Klatsepp County's Comprehensive Plan, uh, goal sixteen and seventeen are described and integrated together. So there's, like I mentioned, there's this overarching Columbia River estuary management plan, which has regional policy, policies, sub area plans, which really talk about the zoning of those, of those management units. So conservation, natural or development. And there are twenty-two of those areas. Then there's a dredge material management plan, which was last updated in two thousand two by the Columbia River Estuary Study Task Force or Crest. There's a mitigation restoration piece and then appendices. And then those are part of the comprehensive plans for Klatsepp County, Warrington and Astoria. And then of course, implementing code um, to, to implement that, that plan in the policies. So um, kind of drilling down into what is happening right now. Um, so the disposal of dredge material is specifically regulated through goal sixteen. It prioritizes disposal in uplands and ocean waters first, followed by estuary waters. Um, and that's makes a lot of sense typically, especially in smaller estuaries, where if you're dredging a navigation channel, you don't really wanna put that material back in close proximity to the channel, because then it will just fill it back in and you'd have to dredge more frequently. But the Columbia River estuary is a very large system and has a lot of material moving around all the time. Um, and so uh, for the Army Corps of Engineers, sometimes it is not as feasible or practical to take the material out to the ocean or upland. And there is some more science and information now learning about the river system and how sediment can be really beneficial to stay in the system and not just be taken outside of it. But uh, under goal sixteen, the disposal of dredge material in the water is only allowed in development management zones and not allowed in conservation or natural zones. So in the Columbia River estuary management plan, the federal navigation channel, which is the dark blue in this map, is uh, development, its own development. And then there is also a six hundred foot buffer on either side that is also zoned to development just for the purposes of in-water disposal of dredge material. Um, in two thousand three, our agency reviewed the Army Corps' operations and maintenance plan, which included flow lane disposal. And that was uh, to conform with the county's estuary management plan. So again, that six hundred foot buffer on either side. And that was a condition of their approval from our agency to do flow lane disposal in the estuary. Starting around two thousand ten, the Corps changed its definition of flow lane disposal and never notified the state or the county of this change. And they have been disposing of dredge material in areas where it is not allowed in conservation and in some cases, natural estuary management zones. So their definition of flow lane disposal is areas that are contiguous with the navigation channel and twenty feet or deeper. So on this map, that's the light yellow areas are twenty feet and deeper and they're um, those that are connected to the federal navigation channel. Um, we became aware of this issue um, in two thousand twenty-three when the Corps applied to the Department of Environmental Quality to renew their four one water quality certification. Um, and as many of you might know, there is um, on that permit, there's a land use compatibility statement that was presented to Klatsepp County. Um, and they told DEQ that the action was not consistent with local land use planning because of this flow lane disposal discrepancy. And because of that, DEQ denied the application to the Army Corps. So at that point, we started meeting um, between DLCD, DEQ, the Army Corps and the county to try to figure out um, a resolution for this issue and um, the difference of definitions between flow lane disposal. Uh, recently, the Corps and DEQ moved forward with um, a memorandum of agreement where they are allowed to um, begin their new dredging season, which started this uh, past June, so that they could continue to do their dredging needed to operate the federal navigation channel. But one of the stipulations of this agreement is that they would be seeking a goal exception with Klatsepp County to amend the estuary management plan and the definition of flow lane disposal. Um, they need this in order to get land use compatibility and their new four one water quality dis- certification. However, the Army Corps is um, claims that they are not able to participate in local processes. And so someone else needs to apply for this goal exception. So the Department of State Lands has agreed to be the applicant because they are the owners of the submerged lands of the state. So they have worked with the Corps to develop an application for a goal exception. And I believe that exit, that application was just submitted this morning. Um, so that's uh, where that process is uh, right now. And so what is it actually for? It's for that expanded definition of flow lane disposal to include any area twenty feet or deeper and contiguous with the federal navigation channel. And it would exclude, exclude areas that are designated as aquatic natural. So again, those are the areas that have the most significant natural resources. And generally speaking, um, in the map, they don't touch um, those, those units, because those are typically areas that are tidal um, or upland and islands. And so that would be outside of that twenty feet or deeper uh, definition. So that's what's on these maps at the, on the screen. Um, it's probably easier to see on the right-hand side that dark blue is a navigation channel currently. And then the pink area is the proposed flow lane for uh, dredge material disposal in the water. So um, why is a goal exception needed? It's to allow use that is not allowed by goal sixteen in aquatic conservation zones. So because this flow lane proposal goes into areas that are zoned aquatic conservation, which is uh, and dredge material disposals are not in allowed use in that area, then a goal exception is required. Um, this, the, this proposal would not change the underlying zoning. Um, and instead just allow use that would not otherwise be allowed. That helps to maintain the purpose of the aquatic conservation zone instead of rezoning it to development while still allowing for flexibility in the system. Um, the merits of the proposal will be addressed at a later time, but this presentation is to really just highlight the background, the context and the process of how we got to this place and um, what, what your role will be in that. And so goal two is where the exception process is laid out in the statewide planning goals. It has two parts to the goal. The first is really just kind of the basics, the comprehensive planning and how local governments have to uh, be consistent with all the statewide planning goals. But the second part is about goal exceptions. Um, and uh, kind of, and then there's rules, administrative rules that kind of lay out that in more specific terms. So that's in OAR six sixty oh oh four. Um, so an exception is a decision to exclude certain lands from the requirements of one or more applicable statewide goals. And it helps to permit flexibility in the system. Um, it is a plan, it is uh, initiated by the local jurisdiction as a comprehensive plan amendment. It applies to specific areas or properties and it requires notice to DLCD. The final decision is by the county governing body and it must be on findings supported by substantial evidence. The final decision can be appealed to LUBA, the Land Use Board of Appeals. And the administrative rules are um, to assure that findings of fact and a statement of reasons are supported by substantial evidence to justify an exception to a statewide planning goal. So it's actually um, put forth in the comprehensive plan. There are three types of goal exceptions, physically developed, irrevocably committed and reasons. Um, the first two are not applicable in this situation, so I'll just talk about the reasons one. Some, um, there are some specific reasons for um, specific land use goals, but this, there are none for this particular case and proposal. So a general reasons exception would be the appropriate pathway to follow. Um, there is a four-part test that um, an exception needs to meet, which are listed here on the screen. And I'm not gonna go through all of them, but the one highlighted is really probably the most um, important one in terms of really justifying it. So um, you have to have a reason basically of, of why the policy embedded in the goal should not apply in this particular case. Um, and then finally, like I mentioned in the beginning, estuary management plans are multi jurisdictional and they um, they should be a unified plan. Um, and so Klatsepp County, being the holder of the estuary management plan for the Columbia River, um, is kind of taking the initial step to evaluate this goal exception and has been working really closely with us and the Army Corps on it. Um, but it will be important for the cities of Warrington and Astoria to also um, go through a plan amendment process and adopt a goal exception if that is something that, that the county would like to do. Um, and you can do it in a lot, in a couple of different ways. It seems like the consensus from what I've been hearing is that the county would go first and the cities would kind of take their findings and incorporate it second. Um, and just uh, because that, like the, the flow lane proposal itself does go into the city limits of both cities in this case. So um, it, it will be important for them to evaluate them. So that's the presentation, but I'm happy to answer any que- questions.
Well, thank you for that presentation. It was very informative. Are there questions or comments from any of the planning commissioners?
Great presentation, thank you for, for that, that was very interesting.
Thank you.
Uh, I have, I have one question regarding um, the area of the exceptions uh, being that, I think it's twenty-five foot depth. Um, and is it, is that at mean tide or what sets the datum there?
It's a good question. I don't know what their, the datum is that they're using at the Army Corps. I don't know if Gail, you know, but I could, I can follow up and, and find that out for you.
Yeah, they're using, they're using NAVD eighty-eight Chair Farrar.
Thank you.
Okay, um. But my real question on that is um, it, it's quite a large area off to the side of the shipping channel. And I was curious to what extent the Corps has been using what percentage of that area, did they use a lot of it now? Or just a little bit closer to the channel, to the dredge channel?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, it will be uh, in the materials, the goal exception materials more explicitly, but my understanding is that in any given dredge season, they kind of have like their hydraulic modeling that they do and, and pick a few places within that thouwa- they call it the river thouwig, so any twenty feet or deeper next to the navigation channel. Um, and, and they pick a few sites. So it's not, it's not the whole area every year. Um, I think they said they use maybe twenty percent of that area in a given year. It will be in the application materials that you'll, you'll get. Um, but I, I think if I'm remembering correctly, it's, it's kind of a smallish percentage in a given year.
And does that material then kind of get circulated back around and ultimately winds up back in the dredged shipping channel? Or, so the idea isn't to flush it out to the ocean, it's to sort of keep it?
I think kind of the, the new science that has been kind of developed over time is that it, um, even though there is so much sediment in the Columbia River, it's still finite and helpful to stay in the system to some extent. So um, I think they anticipate that some of the material will end up back in the federal navigation channel and have to be redredged at some point, but that most of it probably won't. The area is sort of such that it's not, it doesn't have the same velocities that it's, it's getting it back into that area. So it's um, kind of just staying up a little bit on like the shelf area next to the channel.
Oh, thank you. It was an interesting presentation. Are there any um, further questions from any of the commissioners? Okay, well, thanks again, um, Meg Reed for that uh, information. And um, we'll look forward to the process that, as it unfolds.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, so um, the remainder of, uh, well, um, we'll move on to four items for uh, discussion. Um, beginning with uh, item two on the agenda, psilocybin, time, place and manner regulations. And I presume we're going to get a presentation and it looks like that might be from our planning department manager.
That would be correct. Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, um, we're doing the psilocybin one first? That's okay, that's fine. Um, we have um, a two-track process that we're trying to uh, manage here. Uh, the county board has opted to uh, consider putting a permanent moratorium on the um, production and distribution of psilocybin products in areas outside of the municipalities. Uh, this would not affect uh, the cities of Astoria or Warrington or Deerheart Seaside or Cannon Beach. This would be just areas under which we have control and zoning uh, processes. The, going back to two thousand twenty, uh, the state of Oregon adopted or passed measure one oh nine, known as the Psilocybin Program Initiative, which did authorize the Oregon Health Authority to um, e- establish rules and regulations for the production of and distribution of psilocybin products. Um, colloquially, they are essentially magic mushrooms. And uh, they provide um, according to research, uh, some benefit to people suffering from certain types of PTSD and, and so forth. Uh, it was, we are the only state in the union that has this as an option. The second um, uh, part about this is that the direction was for them to establish rules and regulations. And it did take quite a bit of time for the Oregon Health Authority to establish those rules and regulations. In that interim timeframe, because there were no rules and regulations, quite a few counties and cities put forward either a permanent or a temporary moratorium, so that essentially the rules could get established and we could take a look at it. Uh, Clatsop County was one that chose a temporary moratorium. It did pass the voters in twenty twenty-two by almost the same percentages that uh, the legalization of it passed the voters uh, two years previous. So the county board has for the last year, two years, excuse me, the county has for the last two years had a moratorium on the production and distribution of psilocybin products. That moratorium ends as of December thirty-first of this year. So the county board has uh, considered a two-track uh, option here. One track would be to put a per- permanent moratorium on the ballot. That is up for consideration on July of seventeenth. I think the county board will be considering that. Uh, they will then, if they move forward with that, put that before the voters for a November ballot initiative. If the county board chooses not to do that, the moratorium would end as of December thirty-four, first. And we have suggested a, the development of a time, place and manner ordinance to regulate where these types of operations can exist within Clatsop County's rural areas or unincorporated areas. So this is kind of a unique situation in that we have two separate but parallel items moving forward at the same time. We needed to start this process earlier in the uh, year because of the fact that there are notification requirements for the Department of Land Conservation and Development, D L C D, before we can have any evidentiary hearings. So what we have proposed is to introduce the concept to the planning commission this ea- this afternoon. Then we will take any comments, questions or concerns from the planning commission, put together a draft ordinance, bring it back for your formal consideration later on this year. In the interim timeframe, we've also scheduled a review of the topic by the county's public safety coordinating committee. And so there'll be some additional public input opportunity even before we have a, a public hearing on the item. So this particular process is to set up regulations for these operations. And in doing so, we would be amending the land and water development and use code loud, log up. We looked at several county ordinances that have been adopted and settled on the model that was established by Deschutes County. Fairly comprehensive and extensive set of regulations that we've actually even added a little bit to uh, for your initial consideration. The ordinance that is prepar- prepared or proposed for you at this point in time puts together definitions of terms such as psilocybin, psilocybin administration sessions, farm use, licensee, manufacturer, premises, product, product manufacturer, products and service center. These are the types of items that we would be regulating in this particular ordinance. Second part of this ordinance amends section three, which establishes use standards. Where they can go, how far apart they need to be, how far they need to be from certain other types of uses. And the third part of an ordinance would then establish how we would review those types of uses in different zoning districts. Whether they're an ag, ag forestry or a general commercial zone, we would have a different review process for them. Uh, at least proposed at this time. These time, place and manner regulations have been considered um, acceptable by the Department of, Oregon's Department of Health, Health Department, excuse me, um, and they have not objected to any of these types of regulations. What we are looking for here today is just any comments, questions or concerns that you might have that we should prepare for in modifying an ordinance to bring back to you. There is an anticipated timeframe where we would bring this back to you October eighth for a formal public hearing just before the general election. And we would do that so that the county board could then take action on it after the election pending how they, how the election does move uh, forward. In this packet I did provide for you, an O H A information sheet on psilocybin, uh, the actual language from measure one oh nine and a draft ordinance that I've worked on that is es- essentially based on the same types of regulations that Deschutes County has adopted. So at this point in time, I'm going to stop the presentation and offer up myself and, and uh, on this item for you to consider. If you have any comments or questions or concerns, please share them with me now. We will be bringing this back to you for formal action in the future.
Are there any questions from any of the commissioners for our planning manager? I had a, a general question here regarding the taxes. I know that's not something you're sta- that we would be establishing with time, place and manner. But it wasn't clear to me whether the fifteen percent sales tax is a state tax. Does it all go to the state or does the county get a cut?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, uh, the original language uh, from the uh, Health Department, uh, that is a hundred percent state tax, zero tax sharing would occur as a result. That's different than the um, cannabis
Cannabis, yeah. That's interesting. Um, I had one question on um, more related to the time, place and manner um, questions. Uh, under article three, structure, citing and development standards, uh, section three point nine nine zero zero, item E there, hours of operation and um, I'm sure there's just a general understanding of what an, what is, what constitutes an operation. But i- if somebody's producing, um, you know, a living organism for some use, uh, you can't just stop doing it at ten o'clock at night and come in in the morning. So there, there might be temperature controls and lights and moisture control. I don't, I don't know exactly what would be done. But um, is it understood that it, by hours of operation means like open to the public? Or maybe employees actively working or what, what, what's that?
Mr. Chair, I, I think that that's an excellent question. Uh, I have seen in a couple of ordinances, different hours of operation set up for the distribution centers, like the doctors' offices that are typically used for this, shouldn't say doctors, but the uh, offices that are physically used for this. And then the separate hours of production. And I, um, I, I need to do some more research on that, but I think it's a, it's a good comment. Often, um, hours of operation regulations are uh, established on manufacturing operations because of noise and and things that occur in more industrial operations. I'm unfamiliar with how this actually works. So it's, it's going to take a little bit of research for me to know more about it.
I doubt that mushrooms make much noise when they're growing, but who knows?
I hear when they pick, they, there's a little scream.
Um, one other question, under article four zoning regulations, uh, section four point one four three zero, there's a, there's a glitch there in that, that last sentence. Um, it, it doesn't read correct to me where it says uh, permit procedure subject to applicable development standards provided that commercial uses occur in a building or buildings that do not the following areas.
Oh, okay.
So what did, what was the intention there?
The, the idea is to, to reference the uh, development standards in three point nine nine zero. So I, I'll double check that. I, I see that as well.
Yeah, not a biggie.
You didn't have the definition section in your copy? Okay, yeah, there's no article two uh, changes.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
I found it interesting in those definitions that the definition of psilocybin is given as psilocybin or psilocybin and related product. It's not really a, a definition, but I guess that's just how it's just saying that when we use that word, we're including not only the chemical psilocybin, which is actually a chemical. We're also including uh, products related.
Products that are used for the distribution, yeah.
But it, but is there somewhere the actual formula identified in?
It is not identified. I, I, it is in the original um, O A R. And, but in the ordinances that have been adopted, they have not specifically identified the chemical identification.
So legally, a court would, is, would take the use of that term to relate back to that chemical formula specified in the O.
Correct.
Okay. Um, any other comments from uh, especially the uh, two commissioners on the virtual end of things?
I have no comment. I mean, it was great presentation. Oh, I was gonna say it was a great presentation, but I had no comment. You guys uncovered it really well.
Well, I, I'm interested. I, I live up above the Youngs River. Uh, and uh, the my, my yard and, and five acres is filled with at least a couple of varieties of, of uh, psilocybin uh, mushrooms. If, if, am I, am I breaking the law by having them just grow there?
Uh, Mike, that's an excellent question. It is the production and manufacturing of anything from those that would be regulated, not the growing. Things do grow naturally. Um, I, I do know that uh, Elk Dung is a, a favored location for these types of mushrooms. And if there's any place in Oregon where there might be some Elk Dung, uh, it is probably Clatsop County. Um, but no, you would not be doing anything illegal by allowing those to grow on your property. If you however decide to manufacture, harvest and manufacture bo- both together, uh, then that would be what would be regulated.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions? Think it's um, kind of interesting that here's a possible new type of business that could be in the county. But in our next item on the agenda is the economic opportunities analysis presentation. I'm wondering why there would be any consideration for not allowing more economic activity if it's done in a manner as, as from what I've read here seems pretty reasonable. But that's just an opinion statement.
Mr. Chair, I, I, the only comment I can make is uh, there are strong opinions on both sides of the issue of these types of uses. And um, it, it's not my place to judge. It's my place to establish the regulations that the county board wants. And so if that's the direction they want to go, we'll head that way. But that's a, a fair statement.
I understand that and it's a good answer. And um, I guess, I guess that finishes our discussion of psilocybin. If somebody has last minute.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, that was good, good presentation. Also good packet information there. I appreciated uh, all the info there. So we'll move on to item three, uh, county economic opportunities analysis. It's a, a brief.
Just a quick update.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Chair and members of the planning commission, the uh, county board and, and county staff have been working through the economic opportunities analysis or E O A. It is an opportunity for us to lay out future goals, policies and hopefully action statements that will help us create a more positive growth future for our economy. Next one. Just going to give you a quick review of the project, talk a little bit about where we are, the buildable lands inventory and the term diversify the economy. We had a consultant or a couple of consultants that we worked with early on in this process. Uh, we decided not to extend the contract and to bring the work in-house. Uh, the idea behind that is to actually focus on things that are much closer to home. Uh, the initial work by the consultant was good work. However, it was not really county specific. Wasn't as detailed as I had hoped. And so we decided to bring the rest of the work inside, in-house. The buildable lands inventory is where we are looking at which employment lands around the county are available for development and the creation of economic opportunity. There really are two types. One are vacant parcels and the second is redevelopment parcels. Uh, the initial work that was done by the consultant was not really done at a scale that was very helpful to us in understanding uh, what was happening. So we worked with our internal G I S group, which they are stellar. They're absolutely amazing. Uh, they very quickly put together uh, an updated s- series of maps and layers that we now can use to actually calculate the amount of land that we have available in the rural areas of our county for employment. And it's not a lot. The results are, we do not have a lot of land that isn't already in use. Uh, that is what we would call employment land. Um, the other thing that I want to focus on is we really want to create a role for or reinvent the role for the county in economic development. And so we're really going to focus in on what the county does, who does it, who are our partners and, and what we should actually be doing to um, move us forward. We're still hoping to complete or we will complete by December of twenty twenty-four. That's a statement, not a hope. So next one, please. So here are some of our initial assumptions. We have said we need to diversify the economy since nineteen eighty-one. Uh, we have changing regulations with regards to FEMA and the BIOP and also the H C P, which are going to impact the development of employment lands going forward. We do recognize that we have what I call the big three, forestry, fisheries and tourism. They are evolving and changing as we speak. And the E O A is not just a land exercise. In more urban areas, an E O A is a way to justify more development land. In our, in our county, in the municipalities, there are a lot of areas that could be redeveloped in Astoria and Warrington and Seaside especially. We want to also create an action plan. This is what we need to do. This is what we said we're going to do, but this is what we need to do at this point. And I think the other thing that has been very, very clear from the beginning of the process is housing, housing, housing has been a critical issue for the expansion of local people in, in their businesses, to hiring and bringing people over here. And also, for that matter, housing as an economic development tool. We need to have the right construction trades here, trained and located here so that it can actually build the houses that we believe we need. Next one, if you would. Keep going. Just going to go very quickly through these. You can see that um, jobs were impacted by COVID. No surprise there. I will tell you that as of this last year, we've now surpassed our pre-COVID employment numbers. Uh, in the last year, we've added another two hundred and twenty employed people to our area. Going. This is an interesting one and, and it's highlighted black for Clatsop County and it's highlighted blue for the state of Oregon. What this essentially does is it shows you how volatile the employment levels are in Clatsop County relative to the state. The state does have some volatility and seasonality, but Clatsop County is the poster child for seasonal work. And the seasons cross over and mix. It's not all just one season, but there's clearly a summer season and there's clearly a winter season. Excellent, please. In the last year, we've added two hundred and twenty new non-farm jobs. Uh, most of them have been in health, government and um, education and construction. We have lost jobs in the production of non-durable goods, paper. And also in the uh, transportation and even in retail trade has gone down slightly. Regional employment projections for the next ten years are actually now eight years. This is a little bit older. Is that the state is going to grow at about ten percent. Jobs will grow from, will be ten percent more jobs over the next ten years. Uh, Clatsop County is projected to grow at about nine percent, a slightly slower than the state as a whole. But still nine percent growth is better than other parts of the state. This is the one that I think has gotten the technical advisor committee uh, kind of talking the most. This is jobs, excuse me, wages, wage growth is in blue in Clatsop County. So it's in the last ten years, wages grew by So it's in the last 10 years, wages grew by essentially 52%, but the price of housing grew by over 100%. So the price of housing has, is growing faster than wages are growing in our area, and that is a common theme. We heard from business owners and people who are trying to hire people to move to this particular area. Excellent, please. This one is a very messy chart, but it's interesting to me in that it says most residents have to commute other cities, so they live in one city and commute to work in other cities. So highways 26, 30, and 101 are the lifeblood of our employees. And when there's something that goes wrong with highway 30, significant number of employees are impacted. Same with 26 and the same with 101. Excellent, please. This is a relatively new statistic that I threw in there, but of all of the job openings that were listed at the end of 2023, 64% of them did not require any degree beyond a high school diploma. So we have jobs out there for a multiple, multiple levels of educational background, and, and they're not getting filled. Excellent. Um, unemployment, that we are at, right now, we are at, uh, 3.9%. We are lower than Tillamook, lower than the state of Oregon, and pretty significantly lower than Columbia Cow- County in terms of the percentage of our people who are on unemployment. Excellent. Buildable lands. I'm going to go quickly through this, just keep going. Other than to say that there's very little land in the rural sections of our county that are available for employment growth. There are a few lots available in Napa, and there's some areas, uh, along highway 26, but they're all fairly small in size. Excellent. Excellent. All right. In 1979, there was a fairly significant economic downturn. Significant losses in jobs in our big three industries. We came together and did our goal nine, and the goal is to diversify and improve the economy of Clatzen County and the state. Keep going. In 2005, they did an economic development survey. The conclusion was we need to diversify our account, our economy. They did some changes to how we do economic development. They organized around the, the new organization Cedar. Going. 2014, an economic development, uh, a vision plan, talked at length about diversifying the economy. Keep going. Wrong date here, but 2023 Goal Nine Plan talks about diversifying the economy. We have the big three. And, and this is not unlike, we are not unlike, and I hate to say this, the Iron Range of Minnesota, Detroit, the coal mining regions of West Virginia. They had their big three, maybe big one, big two. But we have, we have something. We have, we have this issue that we are very dependent on these three industries. We need them to succeed, but we actually need to be working towards bringing up new types of industries in our area. Excellent. Where we're at is we're now in the process of gathering new data, updated information to bring back to the, um, technical advisory committee. The second thing that we're working on diligently right now is a public participation process. Uh, press releases went out this week. We have a questionnaire that we put out for community members, business owners, visitors to take to tell us a little bit about, essentially take the temperature of, of the people who are here as far as what we would like to see moving forward. This is kind of a, a 20-year follow-up to the survey that was done in 2004 and 2005. We want to see if those attitudes have changed a little bit, but that public participation process, we're trying to promote extensively. So if we can, I've already talked with K M U N, hopefully we'll be talking to the local newspapers and, and so forth, to get people to share their thoughts and ideas with us where they'd like to see us go. Um, with that, I'm going to close, let you know that the technical advisory committee is going to be meeting again in August and September to review the updated data. And, uh, we'll be presenting a plan to you for your review later this fall. Any questions?
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Are there questions from any of the commissioners?
This is Katie. I just have a, a request. I don't know if we have that particular presentation in our email, um, or in any of the packet, but I would really enjoy having that to review, uh, or add my notes to the, if that's okay.
I can certainly add your, your name to the mailing list and email.
Thank you. Okay, perfect.
I would appreciate you putting my name on there as well.
Yeah, and, uh, uh, my name as well, please. Thank you.
It would be easier for me simply to add the entire planning commission to, to the email list and, and you guys can see where we're headed. Yeah.
Perfect.
Done.
Uh, those were some very informative slides, but some of them, you know, I could have spent 10 minutes probably. But I understand we have to move on, and I, um, I don't know how we're doing on time because our clock doesn't work. Oh, we've got a little bit of time. Um. Just two things that come to mind for me was, um, this big three keeps getting men- mentioned, but in terms of actual uh, employment numbers of people working in them, uh, it's just the tourism one that, that really has a lot of employees. The, the farm fish and forestry are, are, are small numbers of people employed, and that's partly due to, I think, efficiencies in, in how that kind of operation is done nowadays, that, um, you've gone on these forest tours, you see the equipment used, takes very few people out there to, to, to fill a log truck up, uh, compared to the old days. And I don't see that changing a lot. On, on the other hand, I guess those products themselves, if they could stay here locally and be turned into things, products right here, that would be a way to expand on that. On the fish, I, I don't know, unless there's some fish out there that nobody knows about, or that are unpopular and somebody comes up with a new recipe. But my point is, I mean, we should be focusing on how can we, um, increase, well, like you said, construction, that's an obvious one. We shouldn't be having people from the valley come over here to build our houses and our shops and all that. We need a workforce here to do that. So that's one thing, but, you know, with regard to healthcare, I'll, I'll go back and I'll, I'll make a point. It seems absurd that with healthcare being our, our top employer, that we wouldn't want to expand all the opportunities there. And I consider the psilocybin issue, uh, a new opportunity. There are a lot of people with certain psychological conditions and so on. I'm obviously not an expert, but where this could help, and why wouldn't we want to stay in the forefront of what's being looked at in the medical field to be done here? We have a, a great hospital down the street here that's got all kinds of things being built there and has the top level equipment, and, and that's all good, but there's, there's smaller things that can be done. And then, you know, with, with education, I'm just, I'm just so kind of, I guess I was encouraged by your slide that showed how many jobs are out there for, um, for people without, uh, uh, more than a, than a high school, uh, degree. And, and I'm all for not everybody going to college, even though I went and it was a great thing for me. It, it's not for everybody certainly, and there's a whole bunch of different ways of getting trained and getting proficient at something that would really be helpful to the local economy here. So I, that, that's encouraging. One thing that, that's kind of been discouraging lately is the, all the problems up at our community college, though, and, and I don't know if they're involved in your technical advisory committee on the economic development.
Mr. Chair, yes, we have, uh, representatives from the community college and, and, uh, workforce development is one of the big five. And, and so Clatzen Community College will be playing an important role in that as they move forward. We want to support them so that they're, they come out of everything they're going through successfully and, and because they're training people who could stay here. And, and that's where, where I think we're going to get the most bang for our buck. If I could add to, we have, we have two healthcare systems that serve the county. That's unusual. Uh, we have the, the Providence system that serves out of the Seaside and the Union Healthcare District. We have C M H as well. And both of them, uh, have made investments in, in the area and are going to be making investments. Healthcare is one of the top, that's made the top five for sure. Um, education is, uh, in a, in the sense of it is there to help us create people who can do the jobs that we need in our area, whether it's nursing students or construction workers or welders, or any of those types of, um, professions that, that may require either just a certificate or two-year degree. Um, but C C C also provides the link to the four-year degree as well, and there's a lot of students who are taking advantage of that. So that education is, people who know this area and love this area are more likely to come back than someone from Idaho or, um, Iowa, um, because they might not know how wonderful it a- actually is. And in terms of your comments about the number of employees, um, the number of employees is down in some of those natural resource type areas. Um, but the amount of economic impact that those jobs create in wages and value added to other products is still fairly significant for the county, even though the numbers of employees is lower, the economic impact is still fairly significant. Uh, in terms of, um, the tourism jobs, many of those jobs, however, are the jobs that are, um, paying at lower wages. And, and, and so it's a, it's a difficult thing. You get more jobs, but you aren't getting more jobs that are paying what people call a living wage. Uh, we're doing some analysis on that. The, the jobs that are going to be most in demand for the next 10 years aren't necessarily the highest paying jobs, is what we're finding. So that is causing the technical advisory committee to rethink what the, if you call it the top five, instead of just the big three.
Well, those are all good points. Um, I have one last point that I, um, try to remember back to one of your earlier slides. It mentioned, um, the adjustment of urban growth boundaries and uh, the small amount of county land that we have available to do commercial development or, um, economic development on. So, I mean, and, and the fact that within the, some of the city boundaries, especially, uh, I'm familiar with Astoria, and it, I can see a lot of empty places that are not being utilized. So it just doesn't seem like it would be appropriate to try to expand your urban growth boundary, uh, if you've got internally space that that's not utilizing, you know, and, and then the county's supply is small, so when you hand that urban growth, you're eating into the county's land.
Uh, Mr. Chair, also with regards to the urban growth boundaries, those municipalities do their own analysis on their industrial lands and, and if there's any change to those urban growth boundaries, they have to do this same sort of analysis. Uh, this process did not analyze that on behalf of Astoria and Warrenton and Seaside. They're, they've done their own work. And I, I know as a former Warrenton planner, we were not looking at any urban growth boundary changes because there was a significant amount of industrial, commercial land still available.
Okay. Anybody else have, um?
I, I have a question. Can, can you share with us, uh, the name of the consultant who, uh, provided the initial, uh, data for the study?
We used Johnson Economics and McKenzie Planning.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just a, and this, this is just a food for thought kind of thing along the lines of what we're discussing. Um, what, you know, with regards to the fishing industry, and it's, you know, that a study was done with the Oregon Coast Visitors Association that like 90% of our seafood consumed on that, on, so now we're back on the tourist side, isn't even coming from, from our location. It's coming from, you know, imported from other places, domestic and international sources. So, so that's another, you know, consideration when we're trying to uphold all these tiers, you know, the, the tourist type jobs and how that relates, and then also our fishing industry and how that relates. So that's food for thought, but another great presentation. Thank you so much.
One other quick comment to that. I know in, in Garibaldi, the, the community went, got together to try to create a vertical supply chain where local fishers were providing seafood to area restaurants. And so there was a, it was, there was a discussion and a connection, uh, made between those areas a couple of years ago. I, I don't know how it's done, but I know that that discussion was done there, and it certainly could happen here, too.
Oh, I, I wanted to make one more comment. Um, my experience professionally is in the A E C, uh, industry. And my observation, having been a small business owner in this county for, uh, almost, uh, almost eight or nine years now, um, is that we are probably, this county is probably going to lose um, a, a lot of our professionally licensed individuals, uh, due to retirement and, uh, and other factors over the next, uh, couple of years. And, um, there's a lot of work to be done in this county and in my industry. And because of the housing prices, it's very, very, very difficult to get people who are in the industry to come here and, um, establish a business or even collaborate. And you're seeing a lot of out-of-towners come in, and it's really unfortunate that, that we don't have local civil engineers, right, or a, a, a lot of other surveyors, because, you know, we don't, we can't make the kind of money that is required to, to afford to live here, you know, and it's, it's really a bummer. It's a super major bummer because once the out-of-towners come in, they, the, the costs for, for doing business are going to just shoot through the roof. And the locals are going to feel it more than anybody. So, um, and, and I just see that generally in our industry, but that's just my comment. Um, there's nothing we can do about housing prices unless we build a whole lot more houses on land that we don't have, I guess. Um, all right. Thanks.
Mike, you are echoing a lot of what the technical advisory committee has said. Thank you.
Okay, well, I guess we can move on to item four, a continuation of, uh, a several meeting long process of clear and objective standards discussion. And that looks like, uh, we're going to have a presentation or a discussion led by possibly David Cook. Indeed.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, I'm David Cook. Um, we have a, a follow-up to the Clear and Objective Standards Update, um, covering Article Four of the Land and Water Development and Use Code, which goes over the specific zone regulations. Um. For today, there are a number of zones that have been updated. Some of them aren't necessarily related to housing, um, so much, which is kind of sort of the impetus that, that, that started this, um, this effort to update. Um, but they've been included in there, um, as we were just trying to clean up a lot of the code, um, as we go through this process. Um, I'll say the, the biggest change that you will see, which covers every zone that we're talking about today, um, has been a, a change where the permissible uses and the conditionally permissible uses have been reorganized into a table format, which we think is easier to read and is a little bit more standardized throughout the, the rest of the law duck. Um, every zone also has had their specific development standards, like maximum building height, setback restrictions, lot size standards. Those have all been moved into a table format as well to try and make things a little more clear for, um, for folks. Um, I can talk a little bit about some of the specific, um, updates that I did. I can talk a little bit about some of the specific updates that I did to a few of the zones. So so for this for this meeting, I've worked on the RA one, two, five, and 10 zones. Any change that isn't one of those sort of standardized changes that I I just talked about has been pretty minor, but I'll I'll just go through it real quick for you anyway. In the RA one zone, there's and the RA two zone, there's a conditional use that talks about how you can permit an accessory use prior to a recently permitted primary use. It's a very cumbersome, multi-multi-line method for permitting, something that we really have an administrative way of doing a lot easier. So I'm just proposing that we just strike that entirely because there's a far easier and more cost-effective way of of achieving that. In the RA five zone, there are two specific sections which talk about the Clatsop Plains planning area and the Seaside Rural Planning Area. Both of them both of these standards are talking about restrictions on the size for manufactured dwellings within their planning areas. We're proposing the removal of these restrictions because A, it limits housing options and B, those standards are no longer reflected in the current community plans that were recently adopted. In the RA 10 zone, we do not have any land that is zoned RA 10, but we still have the zone. And the non-standard changes to this zone, this one also had a limit on manufactured dwelling sizes in the Clatsop Plains, so we're proposing to get rid of that. And it has specific setback standards which are dramatically more restrictive than any other zone that we have. So I am proposing to make those match the setback standards for the RA five zone.
Okay.
Uh, Table two is referenced through all these in the summary pages. Is that what starts on page eighty-four?
Yeah, eighty-five. Page eighty-five of your packet is where that starts.
That's what I thought. It's just it's not labeled.
Yeah, I I noted that, too. I was going to suggest that you actually label it Table two.
Yeah, it needs it needs like a little T or something, too, for what the difference, type one, type two, the red means. I probably have that, but I looked I unless I missed it, I didn't see where that was noted anywhere. But I otherwise, I do really like the table because it's somebody that doesn't do this for a living, if they're trying to figure out, you know, what they can or can't do, or they're looking for a specific something, it's very easy to look at this versus kind of read through all of the all the zoning.
Any questions from the two virtual commissioners? On that table two, I was wondering what the blank squares under a specific zone for, for example, auto sales and service. In the neighborhood commercial zone, there's they're they're empty squares. So what is the empty square?
Yeah. Commissioner Farrar, if I if I had to guess, it's either we we missed adding it or it was meant to be colored in, you know, green so that you know that it's not a a permissible use in there. It's not our intent unless we specifically called it out in the agenda summary to remove or add uses that are allowable in the zone. So, you know, if we didn't talk about it under that agenda summary, then then it's just a mistake on the table. That'll have to be corrected certainly before this is brought to you guys for a formal adoption.
Well, there's a number of them. Under contractor establishment, all the RA zones are empty fields and as you go through, you'll see there's, you know, there's maybe a score of them, which, you know, that happens. I'm not I'm not reprimanding anybody here, just pointing it out. I had one question in Table three, the dimensional and performance standards. And this, I'm looking at package page twenty-six and this is for, not sure which, I guess, a coastal beach residential zone. And under item G, there is item, well, then it goes to more letters, which is kind of a different outline approach. But so in the the column to the right on that chart or that table, well, there's ABC, then it goes ABCDEF. So that's kind of again, not not a good outline form. I'm I'm trying to tell direct you to what I'm looking at and it's item D in there. So it's just below the middle of the page. And it says photographs of the undisturbed site shall be required. And I was wondering, you you may have that in a couple of other places. I think I think there's reference to that in a couple of other places. But what are the standards for those? I know it says that they don't have to be commercial, but how many photos, from what angles, from what distances? How do you is there a an information sheet that you can give a a prospective developer to to let them know what what they actually need?
Yeah, Commissioner Farrar, it's not something that's ever been, really. I mean, we've we've seen photographs of undisturbed sites just taken from kind of a so when you're when you're trying to establish that the building height, you will stake out the four principal corners of the structure. So we'll see photographs that kind of show that area from or the four sides. We've gotten two photos before and it's it's been fine. I think so long as we can understand a little bit about what the existing topography of the land is, that's all that really matters.
Uh-huh. So it's kind of ad hoc. You just kind of work with the person.
Yeah. It could be more clear and objective. Yes, we could have specific standards that say you are required to do two, four.
Probably difficult to do that because of the nature of topography and vegetation and all. But anyway, I was just kind of curious on that one. Anybody else has a question or something, just chime in there. I I think that may be all I really have. Yeah.
So the next two items down from that one F, and I just was interested in a couple of these, is a director may require a survey prepared by a registered surveyor in order to verify height. So with the clear and objective part, what's the main mean? Is there a way that that could be maybe changed to say if this, then you have to get a survey?
Yeah, I think that there is a way that you could do that. I know that we have some language in other parts of the code. I don't see it in this particular section where if you're within two feet of the the maximum building height, that there is, I think, a requirement that you have to have that certification before you get your final.
I mean, because that's what the intent is. If you can't really figure out from this, uh, plan versus.
Yeah, so the the survey would actually be more important at the end where you come in, sort of similar to what happens with an elevation certificate in a floodplain, verify that you built within the limits of the law and what you said you were going to build. So but we do have some other language in the code that we can incorporate.
Yeah, on that same area there on page twenty-six, under C fences, just a quick typo there where you have the word need should be not, I believe. It should not exceed eight feet, not need need exceed. Just a something I caught. Anyway, any further questions for Planner Cook? Well, I think we all like the table. We'll just sum it up by that. That's a good approach. Item number five is the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four work plan update, the fourth quarter. And that will be given by our community development director.
So we've been doing our quarterly updates on our work plan that's adopted by the board every year. So this is more or less the closeout report for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, which ended on June thirtieth. And it's provided here to give you an idea of the work that is being done by land use planning. So while we bring a lot of items to the planning commission, there's actually a lot more work that goes on within the division that doesn't necessarily come before the planning commission itself. And we have been trying to provide these so that both you and the Board of Commissioners are aware of what we're working on and the progress that we're making. And it's provided for informational purposes primarily, but if you do have any questions about specific projects, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Right. Comment is on, let's see, which element is it here? Oh, it's under infrastructure. And on page packet page ninety-nine there, I was, or actually a hundred. I was just going to comment. It was was nice to see that the Lewis and Clark Fire Station is applying for is some kind of a grant to help move it out of the flood zone, tsunami zone. I didn't know that was something that was being worked on, but I was glad to see it. So that's that's one comment there. I was impressed by all the stuff that has been worked on and and a lot of it completed. The comprehensive plan has really come a long way, most mostly done, except for the three goals that are being worked on currently. So that was nice to check things off a long list. So anyway, I think it's a good idea that, you know, to put these out, both for the planning commission and, of course, the Board of Commissioners. I'm all for that. Anybody else have a comment on any items in the work plan update or progress report? All right, well, we can move on then to the project status report.
Yeah, there aren't really any updates on this month's report, but we will be adding several things over the next coming months as we move into the adoption process for CAOS, for the law duck housing amendments, for the economic opportunities analysis, and as you learned this morning, the goal exception for the Army Corps and our psilocybin regulations. So even though things have been dropping off, it's going to fill back up again.
Yep. The ups and downs of a county on the move. Last item then is director's report.
Yeah, so a couple of updates on different things. This Thursday at 5:30 PM, there is a meeting of the elected officials, both city and county, that will be held out at the Clatsop County Fairgrounds. And some of the items that will be discussed during that meeting include the Measure 110 deflection programs that were authorized earlier this year, some information about the recent US Supreme Court decision regarding grants passed on homeless and unchallenged folks. And then I will be speaking about the draft FEMA flood map revisions and the FEMA biological opinion and giving you an update on those two items as well. And then in conjunction with that, there's also some new standards that have been adopted by HUD, especially if you are using HUD funding for a mortgage, that will require some increased standards to be met in terms of floodplain development. So it's actually going to raise the base instead of building a foot above base flood elevation. If you are using HUD funds, you are going to have to build two feet above base flood elevation. And that same set of regulations also expanded the floodplain maps, not the official FEMA floodplain map, but this is more or less an overlay on top of those that is bigger than the actual floodplain areas. The I don't know how we're going to work with that because we don't usually ask people, do you have a mortgage? Who's your lender? Are you subject to the HUD regulations? So there's been some discussion with states about how this is going to get implemented, but it's a very recent change. So, yeah, and the public is very encouraged to attend that public elected meeting at 5:30 on Thursday.
Will that be easy to find out there?
The the floodplain or the fairgrounds?
No, the the meeting at the fairgrounds.
It should be. It'll be in that main civilian.
Okay.
So, um, so Childcare Barriers Working Group, we will be meeting at the end of this month to start working on solutions to childcare throughout the state. We've pretty much talked about the comp plan. Let's see here. The Housing Task Course will be also be meeting at the end of the month down at the Bobtism Community Center in Seaside. That meeting's at 1:00 PM on July on July 24th. And then with regard to the planning commission appointments, we are going to be the board is going to be conducting interviews tomorrow evening. We had eight applicants apply for the two seats that will be coming open or the one that is open and one that would be coming open. And then we are anticipating that the formal appointments by the board would occur on July 24th. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from any of the commissioners or our community development director? I see none. Any points for good of the order?
Yeah, I'll I'll just say that I just did a nine-day road trip with my toddler and down to the Bay Area and I spent some time visiting some relatives and friends and I traveled quite extensively and took a trip up the Oregon Oregon coast from Brookings, which I'd never done before, amazingly. And I've got to say that we've we've got a pretty good thing going on here in Clatsop County relative to a lot of other places. And I I just appreciate the what the county staff has done to to provide top shelf services to our community. And that's all I've got to say for the good of the order.
Well, thank you for that. And I'll just say that this is my final meeting with the planning commission. So it's been a pleasure working with many of you, with all of you for the last few to several years, in the case of Mike Maguire. And I, too, have great respect for our community development department and the director especially, who has managed to keep it running in a very efficient and productive way, even with so many staff changes over the last couple of years. In fact, there's already anybody left here that was here when I first started on with the planning commission eight years ago. So again, it's been a pleasure working with all of you and we're we're very fortunate to have such a such a great community development department. So with that, we'll close the meeting.